Good evening, I'd like to call the August 13th, 2020 Meeting of the Greenville City Council to order. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly and I'll be moderating tonight's meeting. First, I would like to call on Councilmember Meyerhofer for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Thank you Mayor, good evening everyone. Just like to take a brief moment of silence for everyone to have a moment of reflection, say your prayer, or whatever you would like to do here. Thank you. Thank you.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
To the republic for which we stand, one nation.
For which we stand.
Under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Connolly?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Here.
Councilmember Daniels?
Present.
Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Councilmember Smiley?
Here.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Present.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
I'm here.
Mayor Connolly, we have a forum.
Alright, thank you very much. Now we move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Madam Manager, are there any recommended changes?
Yes Mayor Connolly, I would request that the council add a closed session for economic development purposes. Other than that, the agenda stands as prepared.
Alright.
Mr. Mayor, City Attorney McGirt, I would also recommend that we add a motion to recess at the end of the agenda right before adjournment to comply with the session law regarding the written comment period.
So moved.
Second, Brian.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Meyerhofer. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I will now call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Mayor, that's six zero on approval.
Alright, thank you very much. Now we'll move on to the public comment period. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or scheduled to be subject of a public hearing conducted at this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who registered with the city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who did not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker?
Okay, the first registered speaker that we have on our list is Mr. Stu Cox. Mr. Cox, if you're present? Mr. Cox?
Is he muted?
No, unfortunately, Mr. Mayor, I do not see Mr. Cox in attendance, so I can move on to the next speaker.
Yeah, if he does come back on, we can probably just move him towards the end of the public comment period.
Okay. The next speaker that we have is Mr. Jim Decker. Mr. Decker, if you're present, you can start your comments. You've got three minutes. He is present in the room. Mr. Decker, if you can hear us, feel free to go ahead and offer your comments. You have three minutes. Mr. Decker, going one more time, if you can hear us, feel free to start your comments. You have three minutes. Yeah, I'm sorry, unfortunately, both of our speakers, for whatever reason, are not present in the room at the moment.
Okay. I guess if they are able to figure out the audio, we can always do it. Because do we have any other speakers that had submitted comments?
We do. We've got a couple of comments that were submitted, and I will go ahead and read those into record. The first one that we have is from Ms. Allison Small of 1620 Wobegon Drive. Dear Mayor and City Councilmembers, first, I would like to thank you for your service to the community. As a Christian, as a wife, as a mother, and as a citizen of Greenville, I am deeply invested in the decisions the Mayor and City Council are making on my behalf. Given the events in the last several months regarding racial tension across the United States, it has become more apparent to me the importance of local government, particularly city councils. One of the solutions posed by many in our country is to combat racism, is to defund and even abolish the police. What may have seemed ridiculous six months ago is now being considered as a reasonable solution to combat racial injustice. Mayors and city councils are making the decision to defund the police and reallocate police budgets across the United States. Most notably, the Minneapolis, Minnesota City Council has fast-tracked talks about abolishing the police while hypocritically employing private security for themselves, three members on taxpayers' money. Police officers have been told to stand down in cities where lawlessness abounds. These ideas have real-world consequences in communities, and we are seeing this experiment play out in places such as Chicago, Los Angeles, New York City, Portland, and Seattle. Criminals take advantage of a reduced police presence and law-abiding citizens suffer. Yet, the ideology of defunding and/or abolishing the police does not seem to reflect public opinion. A recent Gallup poll states that 81% of Black Americans want the same level or more police presence in their communities. There are many other statistics that reflect the dangers of a reduced police presence. Could it be that more injustice, more lawlessness, and more violence does not right the wrong of police brutality or correct racism? How do we prevent the chaos we see on the news from spilling into Greenville, North Carolina? My hope is that this mayor and city council will not only continue to support our law enforcement officers, but also see through a political agenda that harms its constituents. A wrong worldview has consequences. Strong leaders must stand against harmful, poisonous rhetoric that undermines law and order even in the face of opposition, even when the rhetoric appeals to emotion or may satisfy in the short term. I am thankful for the police presence in our community and the objectives outlined in the Greenville Police Department's strategic plan to reduce crime, traffic accidents, and increase community involvement. I know law enforcement officers who love the Lord and serve the people. I see our law enforcement officers on social media interacting with the public in positive ways. I witness law enforcement officers assisting citizens who need help on the road. These hard-working, dedicated men and women deserve our respect and support. Please know you are in my family's prayers. May the Lord give you wisdom and grace as you make your decisions. I pray that if you do not know Jesus Christ as your Savior, you would come to know Him. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Allison Small.
Thank you, Ms. Small.
Next comment. Okay, next comment is from Mr. Jerry McRoy. Mayor, City Council, why don't you folks do something quickly and decisively to help our local business owners and defy our governor and his statewide shutdown orders? Roy Cooper is perversely motivated to keep our state unnecessarily shut down. If hundreds of shoppers can simultaneously visit a Lowe's or Walmart, there's no reason why small business or church cannot implement reasonable measures to keep their patrons safe and open their doors. You are complicit at this point of assisting our governor in destroying not only our state's economy, but also our local economy. The untold thousands of dollars we're losing in tax revenue will not come back, and the businesses you are helping to destroy will take with them employees that can no longer support their families or our local economy. Please do not think it is rational or acceptable to raise taxes on city residents during the next fiscal year to cover the revenue deficit. You are helping to cover the revenue deficit you are helping to create during this unprecedented time. The COVID shutdown has stretched much further than initially proposed, and politics have certainly come into play. I call on you to step up now to support Greenville and Pitt County.
Thank you, Mr. McRoy.
I will just check really quick to see if we have received any other additional comments in the inbox, and we have not.
Alright. I think Mr. Decker, I think still is hanging on the line. I don't know if he's available to speak now or not.
Okay. Alright, Mr. Decker, are you there? Can you hear us? Mr. Decker, I've put in a request for you to unmute, if you can unmute your microphone. Okay. Mr. Decker, could you... Oh, okay. There we go. You're muted, Mr. Decker.
I see him now.
Yeah. Still not getting your audio, Mr. Decker. Is it possible you can turn your volume up? Is there a control or a knob or something?
Valerie, perhaps you could just read the email that he sent.
Yeah, would that be okay? Okay, let me do that. Thank you, Councilmember Litchfield. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am Jim Decker. I have been a resident of Greenville for 30 years. I'm going to limit myself to three minutes, but I've provided you a packet with my comments and additional materials via email. Over the past years, I've spoken to you repeatedly about Bradford Creek Public Golf Course. As a matter of fact, I spoke to you three years ago, almost to the day. The expenditures for maintaining Bradford Creek Public Golf Course has been an area of debate since the course was acquired by the city. Focus groups, an ECU graduate class, marketing 6822, and a consulting agency, Golf Convergence, have all offered opinions on its operation. Eventually, the city contracted with Billy Casper Golf to manage Bradford Creek. With Billy Casper's withdrawal, we find ourselves back where we started. At such some point should be considered moving forward. According to the Carolina Golf Association, there are 29 North Carolina municipal golf courses. Each of these courses receive a subsidy from the city, county, or military branch of service in which they reside. These subsidies run from $15,000 to $300,000 annually. Under the city operation, Bradford Creek sponsored year-round programs such as Drive, Chip &amp; Putt for Juniors, Junior Golf Team, Practice with the Pros for Juniors, United States Golf Association Rule Seminar, Starting New at Golf, Snag Clinics, EGA America, Play Golf America, and Special Olympics Pitt County Golf Practice, not to mention the yearly Coastal Plains Junior Amateur Tournament, which the city's own estimate brought 75,000 of economic impact. When considering only direct operating expenses, Bradford Creek Public Golf Course revenues exceeded direct expenses in seven of its pre-Billy Casper years. The mission of the Greenville Department of Recreation and Parks is to advance parks, recreation, and environmental conservation efforts that promote mental and physical health, serve as a deterrent to illegal or inappropriate behaviors, and enhance Greenville's quality of life. In doing so, the department recovers approximately 43% of cost for programs like youth soccer and youth softball. Bradford Creek has returned a much higher percentage than many of Recreation and Parks programs. Therefore, I join with the Daily Reflector, dated February 12, 2017, to call upon city leaders to fund Bradford Creek not to generate a profit, but to profit the people with the services they provide. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, Jim Decker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. I'm sorry for the audio issues tonight. Hopefully, we'll be able to get those things fixed. There's no one else that's registered to speak during the public comment period?
No, sir, and there are no additional comments and public input.
Alright. Thank you very much. We will now close the public comment period, and we'll move on to appointments. Madam Clerk?
Okay. First appointment is for the Greenville Utilities Commission. This is to replace Mr. Joel Butler. He is a county member, and the rules state that the county board of commissioners will nominate a member to you all, and you all will have the decision to accept that nomination and appoint. So they have nominated Dr. Kristen Braswell. We would just need a motion to appoint.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll now call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
You're muted.
Muted. Still muted. Okay, there we go.
Okay, alright. Aye.
Alright, Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
It's proved six zero, Mayor.
Alright, thank you very much. Congratulations, Dr. Braswell. Our next appointment?
Next appointment is for the Historic Preservation Commission, Councilmember Daniels.
Is that my appointment tonight? Continue.
Okay. Alright. Next is the Greenville Housing Authority, Councilmember Smiley.
Nominate Dr. Reggie Watson.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alright. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. I'll now call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
No.
Councilmember Daniels?
Nay.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Nay.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Mayor Connolly?
Nay.
Motion fails, four three.
Alright.
I will find a different candidate and recommend a different candidate at the next meeting.
Okay, next board. Pitt Greenville Airport Authority, Councilmember Bell?
I'd like to nominate Cheryl Brown, please.
Second.
Alright, motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Motion passes, six zero.
Alright, thank you very much. Congratulations, Ms. Brown, right?
Yes.
Congratulations, Ms. Brown.
Okay, Convention and Visitors Authority, Councilmember Meyerhofer?
So I will nominate for the county to ultimately appoint. I'll nominate Candace Hollingsworth to the Convention and Visitors Authority. Please, thank you.
Alright, motion's been made by Councilmember Meyerhofer, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye, opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Councilman, excuse me, Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Motion passes, six zero.
Alright, thank you very much. Congratulations, Ms. Hollingsworth.
Okay, the Police Community Relations Committee, and just keep in mind, all of these appointments are direct appointments. You don't need a second. The first one we've got is for Councilmember Will Bell.
I did not see any Talent Bank applications in the queue, so if anybody is watching out there, I would encourage you to submit a Talent Bank application and get involved in that board. Thank you.
Next, Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Which board is that?
That's the Police Community Relations Committee.
Okay, did you pull Ms. Neipaul's application?
Yes, but unfortunately, we were not able to get in contact with her to update her information.
Oh, okay, so...
We can bring it back at our...
We can do it on Monday.
Okay, next we've got Councilmember Smiley.
Nominate, or appoint actually, Robert Cherry.
Alright, next board is the Recreation and Parks Commission, Councilmember Bell?
I would like to nominate Nikki Caswell, please. Second.
Alright, motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Smiley. All those in favor say aye, opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mayor, six zero.
Alright, congratulations, Ms. Caswell. Also, congratulations to Mr. Cherry for being nominated to the PCRC.
Alright, and last board we have is the Youth Council, Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
I do not have anyone to nominate.
Okay. Mayor Connolly, that concludes the appointments for tonight.
Alright, thank you very much. Now we'll move on to the consent agenda. Madam Manager?
Thank you Mayor. On the consent agenda, we have tonight the following items. Item number two is a resolution and deed of release for abandonment of easements across Tax Parcel 82505 for the ECU Life Science Project at the northeast corner of the intersection of Evans Street and 10th Street. Item number three is a resolution and deed of release for abandonment for an electrical easement across Tax Parcel 86352. Item number four is right-of-way encroachment agreement with River Walk Group LLC. Item number five is a resolution of intent to close a portion of Ridgeway Street from Broad Street to the southern terminus of Ridgeway Street. Item number six is a resolution of intent to close a portion of Josh Court. Item number seven is a request by the Greenville Police Department to utilize asset forfeiture funds to purchase equipment. Item number eight is a coronavirus emergency supplemental funding program. Item number nine is a contract with the Ferguson Group for FY 2021. Item number 10 is a contract for services with the Pitt County Arts Council at Emerge. And item number 11 is the adoption of the Emerald Loop Vision Plan. Mayor, the consent agenda.
Alright, thank you very much.
Mayor, I would like to pull item number 10, please.
Any other requested items to be pulled?
We've approved the remaining items.
There a second?
Second.
Alright, motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll now call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mayor, six zero.
Okay, alright, we will move on to item number 10. Madam Manager?
Thank you Mayor. Item number 10 is a contract for services with the Pitt County Arts Council at Emerge. We're available to answer questions, and I believe that the director of the Arts Council is also available. Valerie, we might need to just let her in.
Okay.
Okay? Awesome. Thank you.
Mayor, I don't have any questions. I would like to add the following language to item number 10, and it could be added on page two, under Deliverables, paragraph one, and my motion would like to read as follows. Arts Council shall submit a final sketch of each public art project on public property to the city manager, and manager will forward the project to city council for final review and approval. Council reserves the right to reject the project. Project here means the final sketch of the public art project.
Alright. Thank you very much.
I'll second that motion.
Alright. Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Litchfield. Is there any other discussion?
This is Smiley.
Councilmember Smiley?
Is it the intent of this motion that council will be approving the merits of art projects? The intention of this motion is to make sure that the constituents that we each represent are well-represented when decisions are made. But my question is, is council going to look at the actual art itself, some sort of depiction of what the art will be, and decide if that's good enough? And are we going to be making decisions about art?
The art and the placement of the art, yes.
I don't know. I would be opposed to that. I don't think that, you know, I may be wrong, but I don't think anybody on this council is an artist or has much expertise in art. And we have a... That's why we have an arts council, so that they can make these decisions. My understanding is that they have a... Maybe Holly can speak to this. They have a board, a group of artists, that reviews all these things?
Yes, we actually have the Civic Arts Committee, which was endorsed in a resolution by this Greenville City Council in 2012 to do just that, too. We have a wide variety of committee members on that, experts, staff members from the city of Greenville there. And our goal is to represent the community in the best way, but also the merit of the art. We have experts both in art, community development, and planning on that committee.
We certainly can vote on this, obviously, but my instinct would be to let them do it. I mean, if we bring, every time somebody wants to put up some sort of piece of art, and we have to look into it and decide if we like it or not, that's not a... That's a strange place for a legislative body to be.
You know, I would like to make a comment, too, though. I do think that... Um, you know, I, I would like to make a comment too, though. I do think that, um, you know, my, my concern would be when it's, when it's dealing with public infrastructure, you know, we are the elected body of the citizens. I do think that, uh, we don't want to hamper or get into the way of what, you know, artists are gonna do. But in the, on the other side of this too, you know, the, the actual board, there's no, there's no one, I believe, if, correct me if I'm wrong, from the city that actually is on that board. So essentially, there will be no city input as far as if we feel that that's a adequate, um, art rendering, uh, on a ci, on the city infrastructure. So my, my only concern is that there's gotta be some type of oversight, just as if, you know, the federal government, when they send us funds to, for a certain purpose, there's gotta be some type of oversight just stating that this is the purpose of the funds. You don't just give someone a green light to go do whatever they want to, uh, and not have to report back.
I think there are cities, I think there are city personnel on that committee.
Yes, there are. Um, we have, uh, Kevin Heffron with Public Works. We have Tom Barnett with Planning, and we also have Devinder Culver with the Police Department.
What, uh, what is the, uh, how many, how many members do you have on that board?
I think presently, we have thirteen. We're allowed to have between twelve and fifteen, and we have our policies and procedures that we follow.
So, so three of the thirteen would be staff members from the city of Greenville.
That's correct.
I do have a question.
I have one.
And, and I guess I'm curious as to why this is coming about now. I know with the protests and different things wanting to be done around the city, I think that may limit a certain population in the city, um, with that. Um, so I'm just a little curious as to why this came about now.
Mayor, um, if, if, if that question is directed towards myself, uh...
No, just in general.
Yeah, I'll just, you know, I'll just repeat, uh, you know, I believe that the city council is elected by their constituencies. And, you know, if it's going to be placed, any sort of art is gonna be placed, and public infrastructure rights away, I believe, you know, we should have input on that decision. Is, can I, maybe I can ask Holly again this. Um, over the last four or five years, have we put any art on the, um, in the public infrastructure?
Uh, yes, um, and, uh, actually, in the last fourteen years, we've done nearly fifty art projects, some on public property, some on private property, um, and, uh, uh, you know, the, the most recent one, uh, was the heart in front of City Hall. Um, and I think our, our committee really values, uh, again, representing our commit, community, and we think fully through all, all that we do. This year actually is the first year in our contracts that we are listing a work plan of locations of public art on public property for you to review. And, um, you know, we, we want to make sure you know the locations, but also trust the expertise and, um, uh, that, that we have on our committee. And we work hand in hand with city staff. Many times, we do consult with city, uh, city council, and we will continue to do that. That's something in our plan to do. Communication and community involvement engagement is, is key to public art.
And, you know, and, and I do want to say something too. I mean, I really, I do like the heart up there, but I had absolutely no knowledge that that was going up there until I saw a picture of it going up. And I think, you know, for me, as, as an elected official, I think it would be good just to know prior to it going up. And maybe that's a communication issue, not with, between that. Maybe it's, maybe that's a staffing issue that they need to let us know ahead of time, because I'm sure you probably notified the city that that was gonna take place, because there's a permitting process and whatnot. But, you know, that's kind of what I'm looking for, is just not to be a surprise, because what ends up happening is, when we do have surprises that pop up, it's kind of like, I don't like to be caught off guard. You know, when a citizen's calling me up and says, "Why is this there?" Or, "How did this come about?", I like to be able to give them some type of feedback, instead of saying, "Well, let me check", because then the first thing that they're gonna say is, "Well, how come you didn't know about this? You're the mayor of the city. You should know why this is here."
And again, this year, for the first year, we are submitting a work plan with locations, and if there's any additional public art on public property, we will bring that to city council. Um, and so we will continue to communicate, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Well, can the language be adjusted to make it so that, you know, we receive notification, but we aren't required to approve the, uh, uh, to approve, to make, you know, to make artistic judgments? I just don't, that's the thing I'm nervous about, is that, you know, I got a problem with council saying, you know, you can't, you know, don't put any art in that place because, you know, we're using it for something else. But it's the idea that we're gonna have to decide whether or not a piece of art is worthy of, you know, being put somewhere. That, that puts us in a, you know, making judgments we don't know anything about. So that was, so my question to the, um, person who made the motion is, would you consider adjusting your motion to, along the lines of what the mayor discussed, where we get notification, but we're not asked to approve?
I do not intend to alter my motion. If someone would like to make a, you know, alternate motion, they're free to do so.
All right, any other comments?
Rose, I think he's trying to say something.
I was trying to say something, um, I was muted.
Mayor Pro Tim Glover.
Okay, thank you. Um, as we do, um, um, our art in our communities or wherever we do, please make sure that you don't leave communities out. Um, make sure that if, if we're gonna do art, that the art is inclusion, inclusive, and that all of our communities have the opportunity to be able to display art, because a lot of times, um, the districts that, um, um, Councilmember Daniels and myself have, we're all left out of things like that. And I know Dickerson Avenue, there, you know, there, there is a art piece on Dickerson Avenue, and that's in my district. Um, but there are other parts that, um, we need to show people that we care, and that, um, we're not leaving them out when it comes down to erecting art or doing whatever you guys decide to do.
Absolutely.
All right, any other comments?
Well, would the clerk read back the motion then?
I'm sorry, I was actually gonna ask, Councilmember Bell, could you repeat the motion so that I could get that into record?
Yeah, I'm mute.
Oh, you're muted again.
I don't know why it keeps doing that. I'm sorry. Um, I would like the motion added on page two, under Deliverables, paragraph one. After the first sentence, to read as follows. "The Arts Council shall submit a final sketch of each public art project on public property to the city manager, and manager will forward the project to city council for final review and approval. Council reserves the right to reject the project. Project here means the final sketch of the public art project."
Hmm.
And I would offer, um, a revision to that. I move that we strike all the words after review. So the last two words, which are, which are "and approve", and then the sentence which discusses the, with, um, reserving the right to deny the request.
All right, so there's a subsequent motion?
I'm sorry, I just want to be clear on what we're voting on. So was that a, are you offering that as an amendment to Councilmember Bell's motion?
Yes, I think, just his, take his motion, and after the phrase, submit, you know, shall be submitted to council for review, um, then everything after that, where it talks about an approval and reserving the right to deny the request, I think that, you know, I've got no problem with, as the mayor suggested, we should be notified. But I, my, the intent of my motion is to remove council's obligation to vote on and approve any particular piece of art.
I second that.
Don't we have a motion and a second on the floor?
Councilmember Bell would have to agree to amend his motion.
Gotcha, okay.
Councilmember Bell?
Mayor, my, my motion had already received a second.
Okay, so you do not intend to, uh, amend, okay?
With a point of order, Mayor, this is a replacement motion, so I am...
Okay, you're making a motion.
Yes. My replacement motion simply reads, it takes the first, however many, uh, sentences of the, of Councilman Bell's motion, everything up to the word "review", and dispenses with the rest of it. Again, I'm trying to make it easy. Um, I'm using his language, but the intent is that, uh, you know, we would be notified of what's gonna happen, but we would not have to approve it.
Is there a second to the subsequent motion?
I second that.
All right. All right, any other comments? So we've got a motion made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Litchfield, and there was a subsequent motion by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Daniels. So we will proceed with the first motion, uh, by Councilmember Bell.
Point of order, that's, the, the city attorney, I think, will tell us that we vote on the most recent motion first.
Yeah, I think, um, mayor and council, that an amended motion takes precedent over the main motion.
But it wasn't an amended motion. He would have to accept the amendment, right?
I did not amend my motion.
I concur. He, he did not amend his motion. He denied to do, declined to do that. And so I made a subsequent motion to replace, a replacement motion, a new motion, which was seconded by Councilmember Daniels. And our rules require that the most recent, um, motion be voted upon first.
In terms of Robert Rules of Order, I think an amended motion takes precedence over a main motion. So I think I would advise council to vote on this, the amended motion, to see if, if that passes or fails. And if, if it passes, that would carry the day. If it fails, you would return back to the main motion.
All right, I'm a little confused. You said that you'd vote on the amended motion, but there's been no motion that's been amended.
Council, Councilmember Smiley has submitted a amendment to the main motion, which was seconded. So I would advise that you vote on the amended motion, and if that passes...
We're saying Will didn't agree to the amendment, but I think...
I don't know, I don't know. I don't know if the, if the maker of the main motion has to agree to an amendment to the motion.
I mean, I'm, I'm under the impression that, that he would have to agree to the amendment to a motion, but he's making a second motion.
He's making an amendment, he, the, the, the motion, as, as Councilmember Bell, he read the exact motion, and there was an amendment to that motion by striking the, the last sentence, and so it's really an amendment to the motion.
But the person who makes that motion has to agree to that.
Yeah. Where, where is that?
Or else, or, or else someone could just continue to amend and amend and amend, and then the next one is voted upon.
There can only be three motions on the floor at any time. If somebody tries to make a fourth motion, then the mayor would rule that out of order. That's, that's, that's our rules. Those are our rules of procedure.
Mr. Attorney?
The Robert Rules of Order control the, the council meeting, and it's my understanding that when you have a main motion, if there's an amendment to the main motion, the amendment takes precedent over the main motion. Councilmember Smiley has made an amendment to the main motion, so I would advise council to vote on the amendment to the main motion first. And then if that, that passes, then that carries the day. If it fails, you would return back to the main motion.
So if somebody would like to make another motion right now, they would have the right to be able to make a second, a, a third motion. Third motion, amendment to the second one, is that correct?
I think the amendment, the amendment to the, to the main motion's on the floor, so that's what you vote on now. Uh, it may, it doesn't seem practical to just continue to allow the board to continue to try to amend the motion, but it's my understanding that the, you, the amendment to a main motion takes precedent, and that's precedence, and that's what you, that's what you should vote on.
Yeah, I was gonna say, this, this is a substitute motion, though. This is not an amend motion, amended motion.
An amended motion would have to be agreed upon, upon the, uh, uh, from the original person that makes the motion. A substitute is different than amended, correct?
Yes, I would think.
All right.
If it would, if it will, if it will ease things for council, I will withdraw my motion and, and announce an intention that if Councilmember Bell's motion were to fail, then I would reintroduce my motion as a substitute after that. So I will withdraw my motion in order to allow council to proceed.
All right. The motionism is withdrawn. The motion's withdrawn, correct?
Yes, I have withdrawn my motion so that we may vote on Councilmember Bell's motion.
All right, is there any other discussion before we vote on the first motion? I should say the only motion now. Seeing none, motion was made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Litchfield. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. Uh, I will call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Pro Tim Glover.
Um, I don't, um, I'm not sure what, I know what I'm voting on, but, um...
Would you, would you like the clerk to read back the, the, uh, the motion that was made?
Yes.
Okay. And this is a summary of what he said. I will get the specific language from Councilmember Bell. But he submitted, "Arts Council shall submit a final sketch of each public art project to the city manager, and the city manager will forward the sketch to the city council for approval and has the right to deny the request."
Okay. Hmm, okay. So, I would say... I would say, um, yay to, uh, Councilmember Bell.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Yeah, I would say yay, yay to Councilmember Bell's motion.
Okay, got that recorded as a yes.
Mm-hmm.
Councilmember Daniels? You're muted.
Nay.
Okay, Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Nay.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhafer?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mayor, four to two.
All right, thank you very much. Now we will move on to the public hearings. This is the policy of the public hearings adopted by the city council. The petitioner or a representative of the petitioner and a leader in those opposition will each have ten minutes. Persons following them will have up to three minutes each, with a total for each side no more than thirty minutes. Additionally, I want to remind those in attendance to extend the courtesy to persons speaking during the public hearings and to the city council during discussions. Comments made by members of the public are to occur only during the public hearing as allowed by the mayor in accordance with the adopted policy of the city council. There should be no interruptions of speakers or council members, including expressions of support or disagreement verbally or by applause, as this is a distraction and makes discussion difficult. We ask for your cooperation. Thank you. Um, in addition to that, I also want to remind everyone that pursuant to Senate Bill seven oh four, the public has twenty-four hours after the conclusion of the public hearing to submit written comments, and such comments shall be forwarded to the council. Please see the city website for instructions on how to submit comments. Now I'd like to call on the city manager for our first public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number twelve is an ordinance to annex ag Carolina farm credit involving thirty, thirty-four point seven four three acres located at the southwestern corner of the intersection of NC forty-three North and Rock Springs Road. I'll call on, um, Shante Gubey to provide that presentation. Thank you. I think Shante's in the room.
I'm gonna share my screen so you can see, uh, my presentation. Here we go. All right, hopefully everybody can see that. Um, this is an, an annexation. It is located, there we go, it's located in the northwest quadrant of the city. It's specifically located at the corner of Highway thirty-three West and Rock Springs Road. It is near, um, Ironwood subdivision. The current city limit- The current city limits are in green, the subject property is locate is shown in red. The property is located in Schoolhouse Branch and the Harris Mill Run watershed, it will be located in voting district number one. Um the property is um almost 35 acres, at this point, um the only thing being developed is a 30,000 square foot uh bank, and that has estimated tax value of $3 million, and I will be happy to answer any questions.
Alright, thank you very much, Ms. Guby, any questions for Ms. Guby? Seeing none, the public hearing is now open, those to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record, the first person has 10 minutes, all others have 3 minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers to speak in favor for this item, and I'm checking to see if we received any input in our inbox, and we have not.
Alright, thank you very much. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record, the first person has 10 minutes, all others have 3 minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers to speak in opposition to this item, and we have not received any um input in our inbox in opposition either.
Alright. The public hearing is now closed, open for board discussion, so any discussion from the council? Seeing none, just as a reminder, pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of this public hearing to submit written comments, and such comments shall be forwarded to the council. See city website for instructions on how to submit comments. We'll now move on to the next public comment period, or public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor, item number 13 is an ordinance to annex Carter Ridge involving 128.6 acres, whoops, am I muted? No, I'm not, 28.6 acres located along the western roadway of Bee's Bee's Barbecue Road and between West Fifth Street and McGregor Downs Road.
Alright, I'm gonna share my screen with you. Right. And this property is located in the northwest quadrant of the city. It is specifically located along Bee's Barbecue Road, again, it's between uh West Fifth Street, McGregor's McGregor Downs Road. The current city limits is shown in green, this property is shown in red. It's located in the Schoolhouse Branch, Harris Mill Run watershed. This will be located in voting district number one. It's anticipated to have a subdivision of 322 single family and 156 townhomes, and the estimated tax value is $20 million, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Alright, any questions for Ms. Guby? Seeing none. The public hearing is now open. Those to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record, the first person has 10 minutes, all others have 3 minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers for this item, and checking our inbox, we have not received any comments either.
Alright, thank you. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record, first person has 10 minutes, all others have 3 minutes.
Mr. Mayor, we do not have any registered speakers in opposition, and we have not received any um public input comments as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. The public hearing is now closed, open for a board discussion. Pursuant to, just a reminder, pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of this public hearing to submit written comments, and such comments shall be forwarded to the council, please see the city website for instructions on how to submit comments. Madam Manager, move on to our next public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor, item number 14 is an ordinance to annex a Trevathan Family LLC property involving 14.0661 acres located between Redmond Lane and West Gun Road and west of the Pitt Greenville Airport, again, Ms. Guby?
And this property is located in the northwest quadrant of the city. It is specifically located, again, um it's adjac- almost adjacent to Pitt Greenville Airport west of Bellbar Highway. It's located in the Johnson Mill Run Parker's Creek watershed. Uh again, those property, city uh limits are in green, property is shown in red. This is currently the site of the North State Steel Company, uh they are doing an expansion, so that is why uh there a sewer is needed for the property, and of course sewer necessitates annexation into the city. So at this point in time, the current tax value is 1.4 million, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Alright, thank you very much, Ms. Guby, any questions for Ms. Guby? Seeing none, the public hearing is now open, those to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. State your name for the record, the first person has 10 minutes, all others have 3 minutes. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone?
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers for this item, and we have not received any public input either.
In favor of it, right?
In favor, that's right.
Thank you. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record, first person has 10 minutes, all others have 3 minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have anyone registered to speak in opposition, and we have not received any input in opposition either.
Alright. Thank you very much, the public hearing is now closed, open for a board discussion. Alright, as a reminder, pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of this public hearing to submit written comments, and such comments shall be forwarded to the council. Please see the city website for instructions on how to submit comments. Madam Manager, we'll move on to the next item.
Thank you, Mayor, item number 15 is an ordinance requested by Collis and Ann Moore LLC et al. to rezone a total of 2.3885 acres located at the southwestern corner of the intersection Moy Boulevard and Statensburg Road from Medical MS, Medical Support, and MCG, Medical General Commercial, to M to Medical Heavy Commercial, and I'll turn that over to Brad Sevier for that presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Connolly, members of council, I'm Brad Sevier, I'm a staff planner here with the city. The project is located in the western portion of the city, uh you can see on these this general location map where the red star is. Uh more specifically, it's located at the intersection of Statensburg Road and Moy Boulevard, and it's just across the street from Biden. Uh here's a picture of the property, uh looking at from that intersection directly on to the property, which you can see the former Rite Aid on the site. Here's a survey of the property, it's 2.3885 acres, and there are two tracts involved in this rezoning. The existing land use, uh right now, the northern tract is occupied by that former Rite Aid, and the southern tract is vacant and undeveloped. The property is not in the floodplain, uh however, in the event that stormwater mitigation is required, 10-year detention as well as nitrogen and phosphorus reduction will be required for any project. Uh there's no actual increase in traffic anticipated, um the rezoning request is predominantly one to shift available uses, not to change intensity of the site, so there shouldn't really be a difference um in terms of traffic for the project. Under the existing zoning regulation, uh there's a, they could have somewhere around 19,000 square feet of commercial and office space, and under the requested rezoning classification, those numbers would stay basically the same, which is why there's no um anticipated traffic change, it would just, exactly what they could use it for would be different, um and so it'll give them a few more options, uh different options than what they have right now. The future land use and character map shows this area um to be mixed-use high intensity right there at the intersection, and as you go down, you hit the medical transition, and the site is split between those two designations. Uh neither of them are incompatible with the requested rezoning. So the request is in compliance with the Horizon's 2026 Future Land Use uh Plan, as well as the Future Land Use and Character Map, so staff recommends approval of the request as submitted. I'll be happy to answer any of your questions.
Alright, thank you very much, Mr. Sevier. Seeing none, the public is now, the public hearing is now open, those to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record, first person has 10 minutes, all others have 3.
First speaker that we've got um signed up is Mr. Ken Malpas, and we'll just bring him into the room. Okay. Uh you're muted, Mr. Malpas.
I'm sorry, uh council members, I don't really have anything to add, but I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Malpas? Alright, seeing none, thank you very much, Mr. Malpas. Anyone else that'd like to speak during the uh public hearing in favor of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record, you have 3 minutes.
Mr. Mayor, we do not have any additional speakers in favor, and we do not have any input in favor as well.
Alright, thank you. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record, the first person has 10 minutes, all others have 3 minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers in opposition, and we do not have any um emails in opposition either.
Alright, thank you very much. The public hearing is now closed, open for a board discussion. And as a reminder, uh and for Mr. Councilmember Smiley, because he was very interested in the Senate last time, pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of this public hearing to submit a written comments, and such comments shall be forwarded to the council. Please see the city website for instructions on how to submit comments. Madam Manager, we'll move on to our next public hearing.
Oh, thank you, Mayor, item number 16 is an ordinance requested by CR Development LLC to rezone a total of 71.691 acres located north of the intersection of Williams Road and Dickinson Avenue from RA 20 to to R 6, 64.711 acres, and R 6 CA, um 6.98 acres, and I'll turn it over to Brad Sevier, thank you, Brad.
Thank you, City Manager, um again, I'm Brad Sevier, uh I'm a planner here on staff. Share my screen real quick. Uh this project is located in the southwest quadrant of the city, you can see on the general location map where the red star is. More specifically, it's located just off of Dickinson Avenue extension, and the intersection, the intersecting road there is uh Williams. Here's a picture of the property, you're looking across Dickinson in this in this photograph at the uh at the vacant property there. The entire project is is 71.691 acres, but there are two tracts involved, and and the main residential rezoning consideration is 64.711 acres. Uh the existing land use, the property is vacant, there is no development on the site currently uh on either of the tracts. A portion of the property is in the floodway, and you could, or yeah, you can see that at the top there, um that northern tract, that's where the flooding implications are really, and that's um kind of the chief concern behind the the different classification requests. Um the the project is projected to have a net increase of 608 trips per day. Uh if it's allowed to be rezoned versus a full build, obviously, there's no traffic there now because it's vacant, but they could build out to a certain standard, so so there's an increase of 608. Um with the existing zoning, they would be allowed to um put 145 single-family houses on the site. With the requested rezoning, they would be able to put about 150 multifamily uh units, that's one, two, three bedroom, as well as uh 110 duplexes, uh which is 220 total units for for the duplexes there. The future land use and character map, it shows this whole area as being traditional neighborhood, uh medium to high density, and uh the requested zoning classification is in compliance with that future land use and char- character map designation. Uh the request is in compliance with the future land use and character map as well as the Horizon's 2026 uh Future Land Use Plan, so staff recommend approval of the request as submitted, if I'll answer any questions.
Alright, any questions, Mr. Sevier? Alright, thank you very much, the public hearing is now open, those to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record, first person has 10 minutes, all others have 3 minutes.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, the first registered speaker we have is Mr. Scott Anderson, and we will get him into the room, there we go.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Scott Anderson, and I am here tonight on behalf of CR Development. Again, as as Brad mentioned, we've worked hard with uh city staff to make sure that this request is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Any development in this area um will be required to meet the 25-year detention requirements for Green Mill Run as well as nitrogen and phosphorus reduction. Dickinson Avenue does have capacity to accommodate um the development on this site, um but during the review process for any new development, um measures to mitigate the traffic um will be determined at that time. As Brad mentioned, this um request does include approximately seven acres of conservation area overlay along Green Mill Run. Um and with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Anderson? Alright, seeing none, thank you very much. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record, you have 3 minutes.
Mr. Mayor, we do not have any other or additional speakers in favor, and we have not received any additional emails.
Alright, thank you very much. Alright, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record, the first person has 10 minutes, all others have 3 minutes.
Mr. Mayor, we do not have any registered speakers in opposition, and checking our inbox, we do not have any messages in opposition either.
Okay. Alright, seeing none, the public hearing is now closed, open for a board discussion. Just as a reminder, pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of the public hearing to submit written comments, and such comments shall be forwarded to the council. Please see the city website for instructions on how to submit comments. Madam Manager, we'll move on to the next item.
Uh thank you, Mayor, item number 17 is a revised request. It's an ordinance requested by John F. Moy Senior Airs to rezone 23.9964 acres located at the south of Greenville Boulevard between Allendale Road and Dickinson Avenue extension from RA 20 to R 6A RU, and again, I'll turn it over to Brad.
Thank you, um yeah, as as the manager just stated, this project is a revised request, it had come before you guys a couple of months ago, uh and you had referred it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for uh some amendment and revision to uh resolve public opposition. So this is that uh requested uh revision. Uh the project is located in the southwest quadrant of the city. Uh you can see the red star on the general location map um to get an idea of where it is. More specifically, it is located on southwest Greenville Boulevard, very close to the intersection of uh the same and Dickinson Avenue. And um just for some context, this is what the uh original request looked like, and a lot of the contention was proximity to the church and school property along the eastern boundary there. So if we go back up, you can see that the boundary has shifted, and also the total request has increased, um so so where the boundaries are a little bit different to kind of create a buffer, which I I believe was discussed a a little bit at your last uh meeting on this subject. So here's a picture of the site, and you're. So here's a picture of the site, and you're looking south across Greenville Boulevard at the property. And the current request is 23.9964 acres. The existing land use is predominantly vacant. There's a single-family house that's kind of on the edge there, but the property is undeveloped, is undeveloped land. The area is not in the flood plain. However, if stormwater management is required, then 25-year detention, as well as nitrogen and phosphorus reduction will be required. And there is a riparian buffer on the northern boundary of this property, so that's something to keep in mind as well. The requested zone change has the potential to generate an increase of 1,100 or so trips per day. The current zoning allows 42 single-family houses, and the requested rezoning would allow them to build about 130 duplexes or around 260 total units on the site. The future land use and character map shows this area, starting at the intersection of Dickinson and Greenville Boulevard, as a commercial designation. And the back end of the property is the traditional neighborhood, medium to high density. And this request isn't exactly commercial, however, because it is a decreased intensity and because of the transitional nature of that zoning, staff still feels it's in compliance. It's much less intense than what could potentially go there, according to the character map, which is a positive. And the request is in compliance with the Horizon's 2026 future land use plan, as well as the future land use and character map. And the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the request, so staff also recommends approval of the request as presented. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions, Mr. Sevier? Seeing none, the public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. All right. Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk, do we have anyone that's registered to speak?
Sorry, I was on mute. Yes, sir. The first speaker that we've got registered is Mr. Ken Malpas.
Okay.
Good evening, council members. Again, I'm representing, we're representing John Moy and Rocky Russell in this property. We work with the church. The church is going to purchase the strip that's between us, and I think all the parties are satisfied with the changes that's been made. Be glad to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Malpas? Seeing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
The second registered speaker that we have is Mr. Rocky Russell.
Okay, can you?
We can hear you.
Anyone hear me? Okay. Councilmembers, mayor, and city staff, my name is Rocky Russell. I am under contract to purchase the land before you tonight for Mr. Moy, the Moy family. As Ken indicated, we met with the church or discussed with the church their needs around the subject property, and Mr. Moy agreed to sell them some land between this property and the church, as well as some to the south. And I think that satisfies some of the land needs of the church. So just requested you support this rezoning request. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Russell, any questions for Mr. Russell?
Mayor, I have a question.
Mayor, press.
Yes. Mr. Russell, did you talk with the residents that actually live there? Because a lot of people that go to the church doesn't live in that community. And I still think that the community needs to hear from you, what their, what your plans are before we approve this. Because, you know, they have to live there. Other people come to church and go. The church is closed down. So my big concern is, is that the community is really concerned about the amount of traffic that will, this will bring and all the accidents that they've already had in front of their communities. So that's one of my biggest concerns.
I talked to, I know Mr. Moy and my staff have talked to Mr. Mrs. Outbridge during the first round of planning and zoning, and they expressed the traffic concerns. I have not talked to them since we, Mr. Moy negotiated with the church, but based on the land that the church is buying, it will eliminate some of their concerns with traffic from this development possibly emptying into the back of the property, circling through their neighborhoods. So all the traffic, at least initially, will have to come out onto Greenville Boulevard. So I'm not sure, you know, that was, during the planning and zoning meeting as well, that was indicated, that was their main concern, was traffic and possibly some of that traffic being diverted through the neighborhood. But I think most of that, the neighborhood traffic being diverted is, that concern has been eliminated, you know? So we'll go on to Greenville Boulevard.
Okay, well, I'm concerned about the neighbors who live directly next to the church, closer to the church, the Oakdale neighborhood. We, they have a block captain and a community, a community group, and they've sort of been left out, you know? I appreciate you talking to the Outbridges, but also my concern is that there has been no talks with the people who are really going to be more affected than the Red Oak community. And that's Oakdale, the people who live in the Oakdale community. And I have information if you want to give me a call, and I'll give you the block captain for that community. If you would like, Mr. Russell.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be happy to talk to them, but obviously, we've, we've been through, we've been in this process for about six months, and I would like to move forward. And working with city staff and DOT, because I guess that's a state road, if there's anything we can do to address some of their concerns, if this project's approved, then, you know, I'm more than willing to see what we can do for them. But of course, DOT was going to control most of what happens on that road.
Yes, I'm very aware of that. But my concern is the Oakdale community as well. Because they are, they will be directly affected by the traffic and all of that. And I know that DOT controls, controls to cap the traffic. And I have to, I have to, as the representative for that neighborhood and the Red Oak neighborhood, I have to, you know, listen to my constituents and their concerns.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Gooby.
Hi. I just wanted to just point this out, just a matter of clarification. Since this rezoning request was revised, then all new notices were sent to everyone. A sign was posted on the property again. So I just, I just want to make sure that everyone understands that the set of letters for this first request were not the only ones sent. So a new, a new set of letters was sent showing the change in the boundary and the acreage.
Okay, so Shante, are you saying that letters were sent to the Oakdale community as well?
They, letters would have been sent to folks that were in 300 feet of the, of the larger piece of property. So basically, the same group of folks would have received two letters, the first request and then the second request.
Yeah, because they're certainly within 300 feet of that property.
Some of them are, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Shante, or Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Lishfield?
Shante, did we have any responses back from those letters? Or anybody contact you guys regarding the new letters that were sent out?
I didn't have any letters. Brad's names were, Brad's name was on the letter. I'll let him speak if he received any, but I did not field any calls. No, sir.
I've received a couple of general inquiries that were just seeking clarification on what was being done. I didn't receive any positive or negative comment either way from the new round of notification.
All right. Any other questions? Mr. Russell? All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Russell. Anyone else who'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Our last registered speaker is Mr. John Moy. I'm sorry, just... Mr. Moy, if you're in the room? I'm so sorry, he wasn't here earlier, but it looks like he has dropped out of the meeting. Mr. Mayor, it looks like he has dropped out of the meeting.
All right. Anyone else who'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, we do not have any additional registered speakers, and we did not receive any comments in favor.
All right. Thank you very much. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, we did not receive any, we did not have any registered speakers in opposition, and we have not received any messages in opposition either.
Okay. Thank you. The public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion. All right. As a reminder, pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of the public hearing to submit written comments, and such comments shall be forwarded to the council. Please see the website for instructions on how to submit comments. Madam Manager, we'll move on to our next public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. The next four items are related to the sale of city-owned property located on Fleming Street. Housing Director Tiana Berryman will provide a overview of the project, and then she will identify each parcel, and the council will need to hold a public hearing for the sale of each parcel. So with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Berryman.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I will share my screen. Okay, so as stated, we have several resolutions coming before the council tonight to authorize the transfer of newly constructed single-family units by way of private sale. The consolidated plan identifies increased homeownership, excuse me, opportunities as one of several goals in our five-year consolidated plan. These sales allow for added units in a priority neighborhood and the potential to assist home buyers with down payment assistance. So a little background, staff has implemented a focused approach to neighborhood revitalization at the block level in the Lincoln Park neighborhood, which is in the West Greenville 45, 45-block revitalization area. We're excited about public and private partnerships making this project possible, including that with Bill Clark Homes. If you remember, despite the weather, we held a well-attended groundbreaking in February, and we are thrilled to have received offers to purchase on all four of those homes. So the first is a resolution authorizing the sale of city-owned property at 1495 Fleming Street to a home buyer. Here is the location of the parcel. And here is an image of the home constructed by Bill Clark Homes. So staff recommends, following a public hearing, approval of the resolution to authorize the sale of 1495 Fleming Street to William and Edna Daniels.
So Mayor, we will need the council to hold a public hearing for each of the individual sales. So we'll pause here for the public hearing.
All right, that sounds good. Any questions for Ms. Berryman?
This is Councilmember Meyerhofer. I have a quick question.
Sure.
The, I just was reviewing this last night and looking through the contracts, and the actual offer to purchase has the address as 168 Keys Court, Apartment 1.
I will make a note to review that, and if we need to make an amendment, then we can correct that.
Yeah, you can correct it with an amendment to the offer to purchase. But yeah, on page one of your contract, it's got Keys Court, and on page 14, I'm scrolling through, give me a second here. And then on page 14 as well, it notes the property address is 168 Keys Court, Apartment 1.
Okay. I will pull that and review, but, so we will need to make an amendment to the contract.
Yeah, just wanted to point that out to you guys.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Fine.
Make sure they buy the right property.
Thank you, Mr. Trump. All right, any other questions for Ms. Berryman? All right, thank you very much. The public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody signed up? Am I beyond mute?
Yeah, I was on mute, sorry. Mr. Mayor, we do not have anyone registered to speak during this item, and we did not receive any emails in favor either.
Sounds good. All right. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any speakers registered to speak in opposition, and we have not received any messages in opposition either.
Thank you. The public hearing is now closed. Open for board discussion. Seeing none. As a reminder, pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of the public hearing to submit written comments, and such comments shall be forwarded to the council. Please see the city website for instructions on how to submit comments.
Okay.
And we'll move on to our next hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 19 is a resolution authorizing the sale of city-owned property located at 1501 Fleming Street to Dora Burton. I'll turn it over to Ms. Berryman.
All right, so similarly, this is in the same project area. Here is the location of the parcel just across from Vanderbilt Lane. An image of the unit, also constructed by Bill Clark Homes. And staff recommends, following a public hearing, approval of the resolution to authorize the sale of 1501 Fleming Street to Dora Burton.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Berryman? Attorney, Attorney Meyerhofer? Any questions?
All set. Very honey.
Thank you. All right, seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Berryman. The public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers in favor of this item, and we have not received any input in favor.
All right. Thank you. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any speakers registered to speak in opposition, and we have not received any messages in opposition either.
All right. Thank you. The public hearing is now closed. Open for board discussion. As a reminder, pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of this public hearing to submit written comments, and such comments shall be forwarded to the council. Please see the city website for instructions on how to submit comments. Madam Manager, move on to our next public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 20 is a resolution authorizing the sale of city-owned property located at 1503 Fleming Street to Cassie Harris. Again, Ms. Berryman.
All right. Thank you. So as it relates to 1503 Fleming Street, uh, here is the location. An image of the home. And Mayor Connolly, regarding your question about the $15,000 in closing costs being paid by the city, um, the seller to the buyer, staff acknowledges that that was an inadvertent error and we ask council to remove that term from the offer to purchase in contract on page 10. Uh, the amendment, uh, the amended contract with the buyer's acknowledgement has been received and will be provided. So staff is recommending, uh, following a public, a public hearing, approval of the resolution to authorize the sale of 1503 Fleming Street to Cassie Harris.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Berryman? And thank you for correcting that as well. All right. Seeing none, the public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers in favor of this item and we have not received any input in favor of this item.
All right. Thank you very much. Those in opposition of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers in opposition and we have not received any messages or input in opposition either.
All right. Okay. So the public hearing is now closed. Open for board discussion. As a reminder, pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of the public hearing to submit written comments and such comments shall be forwarded to the council. Please see the city website for instructions on how to submit a comment.
Ready for me, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. Item number 21 is a resolution authorizing sale of city-owned property located at 1507 Fleming Street to Loretta Johnson. Again, Ms. Berryman.
Okay. And, um, lastly, we have 1507 Fleming Street. So here is a, um, the location of the unit. Okay. And an image and, um, just to note, this unit neighbors the home constructed by Greenville Housing Development Corporation. So you can see the blue house on the corner there. Um, and just as a note, uh, that is also under contract. So, uh, we were, the city was able to transfer that lot to Greenville Housing Development Corporation in 2018. Um, and we are looking forward to providing, um, down payment assistance and, and other available resources to that buyer as well, just as a note.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Berryman? Seeing none, the public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers in favor of this item and we have not received any input in favor of this item as well.
All right. Thank you very much. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes and all others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers in opposition of this item and we have not received any messages or input in opposition either.
All right. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Open for board discussion. And as a reminder, pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of the public hearing to submit written comments and such comments shall be forwarded to the council. Please see the city website for instructions on how to submit comments. I will move on, Madam Manager, to the next public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. The, uh, the second to last public hearing is an application to receive funds from the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program. Um, the council will need to hold a public hearing, um, for this. And so I'll turn it over to Chief Mark Holtzman. I think we'll have to invite him in. City Clerk?
Hey, Chief, he's in here.
Thank you, Chief Holtzman.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm gonna share my screen here with you. Can you see item number 22, B.JAG grant application?
No.
One more time. And now?
Yep. We can see it now.
All right. So this is, uh, our annual, uh, B.JAG grant application. This is the, uh, as it says, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program. Uh, this grant is, uh, applied for annually. It's a formula grant based on, uh, uh, crime rate and the size of our city. The $29,000 and, uh, $29,080 this year is also a shared, there's an additional $29,080 for the Harris Department. So, uh, each, uh, agency gets, uh, $29,080 this year. We're the applicant for that this year. We propose to use our funds for our Shot Spotter Program. And you'll remember that, uh, our goals for this program are to improve, uh, trust in the community by, uh, reducing gun violence in our neighborhoods. Uh, we set a goal of 30% decrease in those, uh, calls for service and, uh, more importantly, the injuries to gunfire. And program results, uh, as we reported out the first year, uh, we did see all, already a 30% drop in the first year of gunshot injuries, the big number there at the bottom, 14 fewer victims of gun violence. I will note that this year has been an uptick in that, uh, gun violence and we're working hard to reduce that. Uh, we're not the only city dealing with this. I even spoke with the chief of Wilmington, uh, they're seeing the very same thing. They also have a Shot Spotter Program, uh, that they're working on there, increasing gun violence as well. Uh, lastly, our partners are, uh, continued for this year will be, uh, Biden Medical Center, East Carolina University, and the Greenville Housing Authority. Take any questions that you may have.
All right. Any questions for Chief Holtzman? Seeing none. The public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers in favor of this item and we have not received any input in favor.
Okay. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any speakers registered to speak in opposition and we have not received any input or messages in opposition.
Okay. Thank you very much. The public hearing is now closed. Open for board discussion. As a reminder, pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of the public hearings to submit written comments. Such comments shall be forwarded to the council. Please see the city website for instructions on how to submit comments. We will now move on to our final public hearing for the night. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 23 is a resolution and development agreement between the City of Greenville and Greenville Ventures LLC related to the purchase of city property for the commercial development of a hotel. And I'll turn it over to Assistant City Manager Michael Cowan to start that presentation. Michael?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I am, uh, pleased to present tonight the development contract between the City of Greenville and Greenville Ventures LLC for the construction of a hotel on Evans Street located between Fourth and Fifth Street. This proposed hotel will have at least 90 rooms with a rooftop bar and lounge and represents an investment of at least $19 million into our center, center city. This puts public property back on the tax rolls for private development, increases the number of individuals in our Uptown on a daily basis between 90 and 120, increases our annual property tax revenues by approximately $70,000 and further enhances the opportunity for future economic growth within Uptown. The, uh, the, the property in question here includes two tax parcels on Evans Street, again between Fourth and Fifth. Those parcels are commonly referred to as the hammock lot. The connection between Evans and back, um, to, uh, to the, um, the parking deck includes approximately 0.19 acres. That is valued per an appraisal at approximately $203,000. The hotel flag that we are looking at here is a Hilton Garden Inn, which has more than 860 hotels in 49 countries. It specifically has 25 hotels within North Carolina's largest cities. And you can see a list of those located there on the screen and we hope to add Greenville to that list of the largest cities. This project represents a net return to the city of approximately $1.3 million over a 15-year period, but this is a conservative, uh, projection given the fact that the revenues included in this analysis do not include occupancy tax revenues on hotel utilization, additional tax revenues that would be derived from growth in our surrounding property values, or additional sales tax revenues from expanded commercial activity within Uptown. If you look at the development agreement requirements per the contract, says that Greenville Ventures shall apply for a building permit within 12 months of the approval of this purchase agreement. If it is not applied for within 12 months, if the property has been conveyed, it will revert back to the city and the city would have the option to refund any payments made for the purchase. Greenville Ventures shall also complete the project within 20 months of the construction of a hotel slab. And if, um, Greenville Ventures and the city mutually agree to extend the completion date and it, the project is not completed within 20 months or that extended date, then the city would, uh, start assessing liquidated damages at a rate of $500 per day. The hotel brand, design and quality shall be reviewed by the city and Greenville Ventures together. Shall have a minimum of 90 rooms with a hotel with a rooftop bar and lounge and shall be a hospitality industry rated minimum of three stars. If you look at the parking related to this project, the hotel will lease approximately 90 spaces from the parking deck for hotel use and those spaces are currently being utilized by the city employees and we will relocate the city employees to a parking lot that we will construct and that will be in the vicinity of Atlantic Avenue. We already have approximately $600,000 set aside in our, our capital fund in order to fund that construction. The city will install an automated gated arm system to control access to the parking deck and enhance security. And this was already a primary component of the city's parking plan. There'll be two types of parking spaces leased by the hotel in the parking deck, a full-rate space and a reduced-rate space. The full-rate space will be available to the hotel 24 hours a day, seven days per week and not available for public use, whereas the reduced-rate spaces will be available to the hotel Monday through Friday between 4:00 PM and 9:00 AM and then on the weekends. But those spaces will be available for general public use between 9:00 AM and 4:00 PM Monday through Friday, which would be considered peak time for public use. We're looking at approximately 10 full-rate spaces and approximately 80 reduced-rate spaces for a total of 90. And just note that the lease rate for those spaces will be adjusted on an annual basis based off the approved rates included in the, uh, manual fees and the adopted budget. We are looking at this contract on its own to generate approximately $70,000 worth of parking revenue on an annual basis. If you look at the public investments included in this project, includes a, uh, capital investment grant of 80% for approximately 12 years, waiver of inspection, uh, fees for permitting, and the reinvestment from the proceeds of the sale back into public improvements, which include a covered walkway between the parking deck and the hotel, very short, uh, covered walkway, relocation of utilities, as well as street improvements on Evans Street between Fourth and Fifth that are not required by the developer as part of the project. Now, when, um, just let me just say back up a second, back in December, we actually brought to council for approval a letter of intent to go ahead and start negotiation with, uh, Greenville Ventures for a development contract. And the contract that's presented for you tonight is just a, a, a mere reflection of that letter of intent that was presented and approved back in, uh, December. But at that meeting back in December, a question was asked about the flow of traffic as related to this, uh, this project during the construction period. And what I want to do is show you a work zone map of, of the area to, uh, so that we can, uh, we, myself and the, and the developer work to make sure that we put together a plan that would maintain the flow of traffic and pedestrian traffic, both vehicle and, uh, pedestrian traffic. Here's the, uh, the, uh, the area, the block. And if you look in the purple, that is the work zone area, the area to be, for the hotel to be constructed, plus the public alley. We have a lay-down area on the Harris lot that will be provided, uh, to the, to, uh, Greenville Ventures during the construction period. We have a mobile crane that will be, uh, that would be laid in the, on the public alley, be able to construct the hotel. We also have a pedestrian sidewalk shed that will allow for the flow of pedestrian traffic on Evans Street between Fourth and Fifth. We also have a material loading and unloading zone that currently stands as a loading, unloading zone at, uh, at this current time. And we will have temporary closed, lane closures, but allow for one lane to continue to be open during the construction process and that lane closure will not be consistent during the whole entire, uh, construction period. And then finally, only if necessary would we close down a portion of Evans Street, but what we would look at is taking out some of those parking spaces, uh, along the, the, on the western side to allow for traffic to continue to flow during that, uh, through that corridor. So in summary, what we're looking at is an investment of approximately $19 million or more into our center city, putting public property back on the tax rolls and providing a net investment, a conservative net investment back to the city of approximately $1.3 million, increasing the number of people within our Uptown District between 90 and 120 on daily basis and enhancing the opportunity for future economic growth in our Uptown for which this, uh, this hotel has been in the making probably for the last 20 years or so. And we're finally able to make one, bring one to fruition for the city and the benefit of our public. So with that being said, pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 158-7.1, the city will hold a public hearing. Based on materials provided by the developer, the probable average hourly wage to be paid to the workers located at the property is estimated to be $21.27 per hour, which is above the county average. And in compliance with North Carolina state law regarding virtual public hearings, staff would recommend approval of development contract between the City of Greenville and Greenville Ventures LLC, lay to the sale of the property for the development of a hotel, and adoption of a resolution making wage determination and fair market value of property for the public-private development agreement with Greenville Ventures LLC. Open up to questions.
I have a couple of questions.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Uh, Michael, could you go back in the slides, uh, just a bit, uh, to the lay-down area? Yes, up there, uh, Fourth and Cotent. What is happening? If that's the lay-down area, what happens to all the people that park there?
We will relocate, uh, those leases into the parking deck on a temporary basis during the construction period.
Okay. And my other question is, um, they approached us, uh, they approached us, well, what'd you say, back in December? This was quite a few months ago, right?
That's right. The, the...
And we're talking about an empty lot. It just, it seems to me that a six-month due diligence period is rather extensive. Uh, any, any particular reason that they request that? Any explanation for six months on due diligence there?
I would, uh, I would probably defer that question to the developer that, well, I have an opportunity to speak once you open the public hearing.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Cowan? All right. No more questions. The public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
The first speaker that we have in favor is Mr. Scott Diggs.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh, Mr. Cowan and Ann, thank you so much for the opportunity to, uh, present our project to you this evening. We did, uh, come back to you guys back in December, uh, to discuss many of these, uh, discussion points. Um, and on behalf of our development team, uh, I represent myself, Paul Akerson and John Sandland, who are also all on the, on the Zoom call with us. Uh, our company has pretty extensive development experience. Uh, our team has been developing property for over 35 years. We've done almost 20 hotels as a team. Um, uh, over those last probably 15, 16 years, uh, we do focus on, uh, opportunities in North and South Carolina. Um, and so we're very much looking forward to bringing this, uh, opportunity to downtown Greenville and, um, certainly open for questions, but at this time I'll turn it over to my partner, Paul Akerson. And certainly open for questions, but at this time I'll turn it over to my partner, Paul Atkinson. He'll speak to our local involvement. We are both East Carolina graduates and very involved in the Greenville area. So I'll turn it over to Paul for him to speak at this time on behalf of what we've done. And then, and then John, our third party, can speak after that.
Are there any, are there any questions for Mr. Diggs before we move on to the?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? On behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly. The next speaker that we have is Mr. Paul Atkinson.
Paul, there you go.
And we'll let him into the room.
I think he's on mute or he can't hear.
Mr. Atkinson, can you hear us? Not sure if we can pick up your audio. Mr. Atkinson, did you want to try?
How about this? How about now?
No, I got it.
Okay, perfect. So thank you very much, Scott. Appreciate you turning it over to me, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Mr. Callen, and Ann. Thank you very much again for all of your help and timeframe for this over the last month. As Scott mentioned, we both went to undergraduate at East Carolina. This is something special for us. We have deep ties. I think my family has been in the eastern North Carolina area for more than 100 years. And being undergraduate, a holder from East Carolina, I'm a very proud Pirate, and also a huge Greenville, North Carolina fan. Scott and I serve on numerous committees and boards at East Carolina. We are co-chairs of the School of Business. We are also sitting on the foundation board. And we're in Greenville often and very proud to be representing eastern North Carolina. One of the things that we want to do is bring a high-level, top-tier brand hotel experience to the downtown area. And we believe the team, the partnership has the necessary experience. We certainly have the investment and the focus to execute a great project. So we look forward to continuing on and we look forward to inviting you guys over once we finish a fantastic hotel experience and a great opportunity for the downtown of Greenville to bring a lot of businesses, a lot of revenue, increase property tax, increase property taxes in the area. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much for Mr. Atkinson. Any questions for Mr. Atkinson?
Mr. Mayor, was that, was that the last member speaking in favor? I just wanted to get my question into one of them.
I believe there's one more.
Okay, I'll wait. One of them to just discuss the six-month due diligence period. That was it. Whoever wanted to answer.
Yeah, I think that's a great, that's a, that's a great question. And I'll turn that over to our partner, John Sandlin, to talk a little bit about that. John?
All right. Those, anyone else like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, the last registered speaker that we have in favor is Mr. John Sandlin.
All right. Good evening.
There we go.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council. I cannot add anything to what Paul and Scott said, but I can answer the questions of the council about the construction and the development. Mr., was it Meyerhofer was asking questions about? What was your question, sir? I'd be glad to answer that for you.
I was just curious about the six-month due diligence period. I just thought that was a little lengthy for a due diligence period. I was just curious what you guys.
I'll be honest with you, that's actually a short period of time for most of our hotels. But in this case, because the city has been so cooperative, it can be shortened. But I can, I can go in as much detail as you like about what we will be doing during that six months. But we have to obviously draw our plans. We really, we've only drawn sketches to this date because we really didn't want to invest the amount of money that was necessary until we got approval. But we have to apply for the brand, which takes several months. We have to draw plans, have to get our site plan done, have to get a lot of permits. In six, six months, it'll be, it'll take every, every bit of that with the cooperation that has been promised by Mr. Callen that we'll get on this project. But I'll be glad that, I mean, I can go into as much detail as you, as you like about that period. But that will, it'll, it'll, it'll take at least that long.
Okay, I was just curious about that. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
All right, any other questions for any of those who speak in favor of the applicant?
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any other registered speakers, and we did not receive any further input or messages in favor.
All right, thank you very much. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers in opposition. And just checking our inbox, we have not received any input or messages in opposition.
Okay. All right, seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Open for board discussion. As a reminder, pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of the public hearing to submit written comments, and such comments shall be forwarded to the council. Please see the city website for instructions on how to submit comments. All right. That will be it for our public hearings. Now move on to other items of business. Madam Manager?
Oops, there we go. Thank you, Mayor. Item 24 is an amendment to the development agreement between Seacoast Communities and the city of Greenville. I'll again turn it over to Assistant City Manager, Michael Callen.
Evening, Mayor and City Council. Like to just a few minutes going through the Imperial Development Contract Amendment to start off with a project overview, discuss a project update, and then get into the actual amendment to the contract. First of all, back in February of 2020, Seacoast and the city entered into an agreement for the development of the Imperial property, which included a boutique hotel in Phase 1, and in Phase 2, market rate housing development and redevelopment of the historical office building. In part of the agreement, Phase 2 could not begin until Phase 1 was approximately 80% complete. The agreement established various timeframes in regards for both Phase 1 and Phase 2 in regards to the due diligence period, conveyance of the property, and issuance of a building permit. Agreement also required the developer again to retain, stabilize, and restore office building, and to restore the building for office or other commercial use contingent on securing public funds. This was a site map of the development. You had the hotel on Dickinson Avenue. You had the market rate housing to the north. And then you had a community gathering place located in the heart of Dickinson Avenue to kind of bring together the whole entire area. So with concerns to an update, since the approval of the contract, there's been two primary events that have occurred, both COVID-19 pandemic and unfortunately, the arson of the historic building. These events have been outside the control of the developer and the city and have impacted, in the developer's opinion, the ability to meet the various time requirements included in the agreement. With concerns to COVID-19 pandemic, the governor issued a state of emergency in March, which placed restrictions on public gatherings, public activities, restrictions on employers and local commerce. And clearly, the hospitality industry was significantly impacted by the pandemic. With concerns to also the pandemic, the developer notified us in June that again, the COVID-19 had adversely impacted its ability to meet the time requirements included in the contract, and it was requesting an extension of those timelines. It was also requesting to move up Phase 2 so that it can move parallel with Phase 1. And just to note, the developer is currently working with Walker Dunlop to secure HUD financing for Phase 2. On May 14th, the historic office building was set on fire. And the interior of the building, all windows and doors, and the entire roof structure were destroyed. The only, only the four walls now remain intact from the original structure. Soon after that, the city engaged a hazen company to perform a condition assessment of the building. And the report that was actually issued by hazen found that rehab and construction of the building would be possibly infeasible, would be a possibly infeasible challenge due to the extensive spalling and cracking of the brick, as well as the structural damage that was observed. And also in the opinion of the report, that demolition of the structure was probably the most practical to avoid significant costs and the complications of restoration. In June, the developer notified the city that it was requesting to remove the requirement to develop the office building from the agreement. So as to summarize the proposed contract amendment, that would, for Phase 1, it would move the closing on the property from one year to a 24-month period from February of '21 to February of '22. For Phase 2, it would actually amend that to be able to move that, that phase up a 24-month period and not have it tied to the 80% complete of Phase 1. And the buyer is asking for a due diligence increase from 120 days to 240 days, as you can see there, and to remove the requirement for a minimum amount of retail square footage. And finally, the requirement to develop the Imperial Office Building is also being requested to be taken out of this in the amendment, as you can see there. But given the historical importance of the building, staff has added the following language to the amended agreement. "The developer shall fund the placement of a historic monument, marker, or other public art structure on the site to pay tribute to and honor the history of the building and the tobacco processing plant. And the developer shall incorporate into the monument and structure the brick components that were preserved from the original office, historic office building." This is a rebid site design that, that was provided by the developer. And as you can see, if you recall from the previous site design that was shown earlier in the presentation, the market rate housing has been reconfigured. It actually lays on top of the, where the original historic office building once stood. And that, that memorial, that, that marker would be placed somewhere in that area adjacent to the gathering place. That's highlighted in blue. So staff recommends approval of the presented amendment to the development agreement between Seacoast Communities and the city of Greenville. May I take any questions? And the developers are also available for questions that you may have as well.
All right, you got any questions for Mr. Callen or the developers who are present? No questions?
Got to say, I hate to, hate to lose that building. I hate to lose it. It's a shame that that's going to have to happen, but it's completely understandable due to the circumstances that, you know, the developer and the city have been faced with. With that said, move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Daniels. Any other discussion before we vote? All right, all those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I will call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Protim Glover? You're muted.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mayor, 6-0.
All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to our next item. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 25 is a resolution authorizing the conveyance of city-owned property at 709 Vanderbilt Lane to Habitat for Humanity of Pitt County. And I'll call on Ms. Berryman again for that presentation, although I don't see her.
She should still be in here. Hold on one second. There she is.
Okay. Have a good evening.
Bye.
Okay, Tiana?
I was on mute there. I apologize. Okay, so I am back with another proposed transfer of city-owned property. Okay, so this lot is also in the Lincoln Park neighborhood and is a piece to the block-level revitalization puzzle, supporting the city's housing goals. Habitat for Humanity is a CDBG subrecipient requesting the lot donation in exchange for construction of a single-family unit. The location of the lot is on Vanderbilt Lane, as depicted here. If you recall, the street intersects with Fleming Street to the south, the location of the previously discussed four units. So staff recommends conveyance of this parcel by donation to Habitat for Humanity of Pitt County for the construction of an affordable single-family home.
All right, any questions for Ms. Berryman?
I have one, Mayor.
All right, Mayor Protim Glover?
Okay, Ms. Berryman. The house that the Habitat for Humanity is planning on building, when they take over this home, will be in compliance with the other new constructions that we have done in that area of Vanderbilt.
So the home that will be constructed, Habitat does have just a few plans that they have the capacity to construct. We have had some conversations about opportunities to adjust or adapt as construction continues. Habitat already has a presence in the neighborhood. They've completed a unit within the past year. So I imagine it will be similar to the unit that's already been completed. But we have not approved any final plan as of now.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
All right, any other questions for Ms. Berryman?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motions were made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Daniels. Any other discussion before we vote? All right, all those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I will call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Protim Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield? Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield? Oh, there he is.
Yep, aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Mayor, motion passes, 6-0.
All right, thank you very much. We will move on to our final item on the agenda. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 26 is a resolution for COVID-19 remote meeting policy. And I think the city attorney has this one.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. Let's see if I can share my screen. Okay, can y'all see that?
No. No.
Okay, well, this item is called the COVID-19 Remote Meeting Policy. The purpose of this is a public health matter. It is to prevent the spread of COVID-19 by the council and city boards having electronic meetings instead of in-person meetings. Again, it talks about the policy in this slide to protect against the spread of COVID-19, to create uniformity. By adopting this policy, the council will notify the public that the council and city-appointed boards will be meeting remotely instead of in-person. North Carolina law provides that upon declaration of a state of emergency, any public body may conduct remote or electronic meetings. And finally, the recommendation is for council to adopt a policy requiring council and city appointed-
And finally, the recommendation is for council to adopt a policy requiring council and city-appointed boards to conduct remote meetings. Certain boards are exempt, and those are boards that don't meet in council chambers, and their executives or top management don't report to the city council like a GUC, Housing Authority. And the last provision is if the policy conflicts with state law, state law controls. For instance, if a board of adjustment meeting, if a applicant refuses to consent to a remote meeting, they would be entitled to an in-person meeting. So there's an exception there as well. So again, the staff asks that council adopt this policy.
Any questions for Mr. McGirt?
Second.
All right, motion been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Meyerhofer. Any other discussion? All right, those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I will call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Pro Tim Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Yes, aye.
Mayor, motion passes six zero.
All right, thank you very much. We will now move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, mayor. I wanted to mention two items for the council. Many of you have called or sent notes regarding some recent activity related to code enforcement and the availability of student housing, or how that code enforcement is affecting some of the student housing that might be available. And I just wanted to give you guys an update, give the council an update. So since probably the end of last week, the beginning of this week, we've received about 29 complaints regarding student housing. The type of complaints that we have received are related to minimum housing code. They include items such as water damaged walls and ceilings, soiled carpet, insects, infestation, electrical problems, inoperable smoke detectors, kitchen appliances that are unsanitary, food left in places, outside wood decks that are needed repair, outside metal steps that are damaged, broken bathroom sinks and drains. And so what code enforcement has done is that we have put about four of our code enforcement officers on it to address these violations. We have sent minimum housing code letters to the property owners and hand-delivered those to the local management. Our staff has been working with all of our party, all of the parties involved to achieve voluntary compliance, because really, in the end, that's the first thing that we try to do is gain voluntary compliance. We have also reached out to other departments. So involved is code enforcement, as well as building inspection from some structural concerns, the fire marshal's office related to some fire systems and fire sprinklers, and the human relations officer is involved related to tenant landlord disputes, as well as East Carolina's off-campus housing unit has been assisting the students regarding housing and other issues. For several of these complaints, the hearings are scheduled for, we have scheduled hearings for August the 24th through the 30th. The process going forward is we're going to continue to work with the property managers to get their voluntary compliance. We're setting up compliance deadlines, and we are conducting follow-up inspections daily. We are really trying to give most of the attention to the units that are occupied, occupied units, so that we can get the students back into those units. So I want to pause there and just see if there are any questions from the council. Okay.
Any questions from the council?
I just, I appreciate the, I appreciate the update. Obviously, the safety issues are the, you know, are the huge ones, right? You know, something, if an apartment's not, you know, in the condition that you contracted for, that's a private matter between the, you know, between the tenant and landlord. But when the, you know, but if there's, you know, things that, you know, just are, you know, put the public at risk, that's where I hope we're, we're making sure we're paying attention.
And I thank you, Councilmember Smiley. I want you to know that staff, four staff members from code enforcement, as well as staff from other departments are assisting to try to help the students get back into those units as quickly as possible. But of course, health and safety, life and safety concerns are a most important issue that we inspect for. Okay, one last item. One of my pleasures as city manager is to call out employees that have done great work and achieved certain milestones. I do want to take this opportunity and recognize Battalion Chief Jesse Harris Jr. He has successfully completed the process to become a chief fire officer. He will be one of just less than 1,500 chief officer, chief fire officers worldwide, 1,500 worldwide. And Battalion Chief Harris has received that designation from the Commission on Professional Credentialing. The designation is a voluntary program designed to recognize individuals who demonstrate excellence in seven measured components, excluding experience, education, professional development, professional contributions, association membership, community involvement, and technical competence. And all applicants also, as part of this, identify a future professional development plan. We are so pleased for Fire Officer, Chief Fire Officer and Battalion Chief Jesse Harris, and I hope you will help me in congratulating Chief Harris for this designation. So that's all I have, mayor.
Good job. Congratulations. All right, we'll move on to comments from the mayor and the city council. Let's start with Councilmember Meyerhofer.
I'm all set, mayor. Thank you very much.
Move on to Councilmember Litchfield.
No comment.
All right, go to Councilmember Smiley.
No comments.
All right, move on to Councilmember Bell.
I would like to welcome all of the East Carolina University and Pitt Community College students that have come back to town, back. You were sorely missed, and the impact on our economy and the vibrancy of our city has definitely been felt over the last week. People are complaining about traffic and the return of that, but for me, it's music in my ears. I enjoy seeing it, and just want to say welcome back to the students. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Daniels?
I just want to send my condolences out to Mayor Hodges' family in Little Washington on his passing, and also thank the city manager's office and their staff and everyone for the job. A lot is going on right now. You guys are doing a wonderful job in keeping our city together, so thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Daniels. Mayor Pro Tim Glover?
All right, I'd like to also send my condolences to Mayor Hodges, who passed, mayor of the city of Washington. And also, I have some, let's see. All right, okay, I have some concern about boards and commissions, and I think that we need to make sure that the boards and commissions are representative of our city, that when we appoint boards and commission, people on boards and commissions, we also have to think about, you know, who's the majority of the people that are going to be affected by that with our motion. So keep in mind that we are, we all have districts, and we all have concerns for our districts, and we all are members of the Greenville City Council, which means that we are, you know, we are the council, and we make decisions about Greenville, North Carolina. So in doing that, I worry sometimes that communities are left out. They don't have representation on boards and commissions, which some communities, it's hard to get someone to be on the boards and commissions, but I'd like to see them represented of the community. And I think that we have tried to do that in the past, and I'd like to say, you know, just be conscious of it when we make, when we make recommendations for our boards and our commissions.
All right, thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tim Glover. I too would like to echo the comments made by Councilmember Daniels. Mayor Pro Tim Glover, thoughts and prayers are with Mayor Mac Hodges' family. He was an incredible human being, a friend of mine. I got to know him right after I got elected as the mayor of Greenville. I read a comment the other day on somebody's Facebook page, and they said that if you didn't like Mac Hodges, there's something wrong with you and not with him, because he was just one of those guys that everybody liked. He was a good person. He'd do anything for you. He loved the Pirates. I always used to joke around with him, say that he spent more time in Greenville than he did in Washington, because he's always up here for a Pirate game. So he will be sorely missed in eastern North Carolina. Please keep his family in your prayers. And also, please continue to remember that, you know, COVID-19 is still out there. Just because you don't see it, and you don't see all the situations where people are dying, there are people that are legitimately dying out there, so please continue to wear masks, socially distance, follow CDC guidelines, and practice good hygiene on a regular basis, because you just never know whose life you might impact by not doing that. So please continue to do that. It's very important for us to continue to look out for one another as we continue to move forward. That's all I have. So I would like to hand it over to Attorney McGirt to take us into closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and councilmembers, the city administration requests that council adopt the following motion, holding a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body, including agreement on a tentative list of economic development incentives that may be offered by the public body in negotiations.
All right, is there a motion to go into closed session?
I moved.
Second.
All right, motions been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Mayor Pro Tim Glover. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I will call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Pro Tim Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Mayor, six zero in approval.
All right, thank you very much. We are now in closed session.
And mayor, we'll just need...
Okay.
Come here.
Okay.
All right.
Qualifies advertising.
We are, uh, we are back in open session. I'm looking for a motion to recess.
That moved.
And this is a motion to recess until Monday, August, I believe it's 17th, at 6:00 PM.
And it will be a virtual meeting.
It will be a virtual meeting, thank you very much. Motion was made by...
Councilmember Bell.
Councilmember Bell, second by...
Mayor Protem.
Mayor Protem Glover. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Protem Glover.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Uh...
Councilmember Bell.
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley.
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer.
Aye.
Okay, motion to recess passes, mayor, six zero.
All right, thank you very much. Hope everybody has a good weekend.
Like that.
And we'll see you on Monday.
Yes. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.